To the May tenth, two thousand sixteen, regular meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. The roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and conferred by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Workman Associates. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission and not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerries, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting please either be placed in silent mode or be turned off. Mr. Savadon, roll call, please.
Mr. Apahidian.
Here.
Ms. Cruz.
Here.
Mr. Edmonds.
Here.
Ms. Faison.
Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Crant.
Here.
Ms. Cooper.
Here.
Mr. Sanzika.
Mr. Tagle.
Okay, the next item is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Or, yes, Ms. Cruz, and seconded by Mr. Tagle?
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crant?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Apahidian?
Yes.
Next item is the minutes of the April twelfth, two thousand sixteen, meeting, as well as the April twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen, meeting. A motion to approve from Mr. Apahidian.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Crant.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crant?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Epstein.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Apahidian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Next item is Agenda Item Number Four, Public Comment for Items That Are Not On The Agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to an item that is not on the agenda? No one? Then move to the next item, the Zoning Board of Appeals Report.
Our zoning board of appeals representative is absent this evening, so he can give us his report at the next meeting.
Very good. Number six is the DDA report.
I'd like to combine, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chairman, the DDA report and the planning and zoning report.
Very good.
When you all get home this evening, you'll find an email that is reminding you of a joint meeting between the city council, planning commission, and downtown development authority that was scheduled last night by city council. It is for Tuesday, June fourteenth, at 6:00 PM, at the community center. And it promises to be a somewhat lengthy meeting for, as, excuse me, as joint meetings go, I think it'll exceed the one hour. So we're going to cancel the planning commission meeting for that evening. So we'll be meeting at six o'clock at the community center. I'll give you reminders as we proceed, but kind of exciting that we're going to have a joint meeting with the three boards we're having at the community center because we need enough space to do that.
You want to tell the planning commission what the theme of the...
The theme is to talk about a potential redevelopment project of this, portion of this property.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is Agenda Item Number Eight, Public Hearing, Special Use Request and Preliminary Site Plan Review, File Number SUJPLM-2016-006. Proposed 1-800 Self-Storage East Side of Rochester, South of Waddles at 3846 and 3860 Rochester. Section 23, Currently Zoned GB, General Business District.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to introduce this and provide a little bit of background and context to this application, and then Mr. Carlisle is going to dive into the specific application itself. So, a little bit of history on this project. Some of you were on the planning commission at the time, some of you were not, but on June eleventh, two thousand thirteen, the same applicant was before us for a similar project. It's on basically the same site, but I'll get into it. They received special use approval and preliminary site plan approval for a project. It was a five-story building totaling one hundred and twelve thousand square feet. It was a similar self-storage building. They were approved two thousand eleven. Approval is valid for three years, so it's still valid until June, so it doesn't expire for about another month. But all they have to do to keep the validity is to submit engineer drawings, which they have. So, I don't know if they've submitted the drawings or not, but all they have to do is show up to the engineering department tomorrow and hand them in. So, it's still valid, and at the time, they had every intention to proceed with the application. This was the project. It was kind of this aubla shape, and it was missing this piece right here. There was a one-story office building there. And this is what the project looked like, five stories in height. There was a lot of public comment at the meeting in June of two thousand thirteen. Many of the people who commented at the meeting are in attendance this evening. I would think it's safe to say, Mr. Chairman, I believe you were here, that most of the comments were in opposition to the project based on the height of the building. And I can tell you that I spent a lot of time listening to the applicants after the meeting, express their concern about the opposition of the neighbors to the east. And what they wanted to do was lower the profile of the building, because it seemed to be most of the opposition was related to the height of the building. This is the site plan that was approved. What they did is they purchased this piece here, and they squared up the property, made it more rectangular, and they revised the application. It is now four stories in height, so they've lowered the profile by twelve feet. And it's slightly larger in terms of a footprint. It's one hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot, all-told storage building. But they listened to the neighbors. This is, again, I don't want to speak for the applicant, but this is based on what they told me, is that they acquired the property with the intent of lowering the profile of the building and being less impactful on the neighborhood. So, again, the approval that was granted in two thousand thirteen is still valid, and they're here kind of voluntarily. They still want to do the building, but they want to, they've slightly revised the design. And with that, I will hand the reins over to Mr. Carlisle to complete the review.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Savadon, and to the planning commission in public. Mr. Savadon went over a lot of details about the proposal. One thing I want to remind the planning commission is what we're here for tonight is to consider the application in front of us, consider public comment, and consider what the applicant has submitted. Really, it's a comparison or a conversation on the proposed, the approved plan at five stories as compared to the four-story building that's being proposed. And what we have done in part of our review was...
Mr. Savadon, can you... Comparison table?
Yes. It's not shown on the screen.
Oh.
What we have done to provide some background information for the planning commission in the public is on page three of our report, which Mr. Savadon, I hope, is going to pull up here. Is it off up there? Is it in there? Does everyone can see that table? This is a table comparing the approved building that was approved in June of two thousand thirteen as compared to what the applicant has re-submitted. The planning commission will note that the applicant has submitted a plan that includes a two-phase build-out. The first phase is the part that can be built up front, up onto Rochester Road, and the second phase is the back part of the building that's closest to the residential. I want to note that when we did our review, we reviewed the building as a total, because we have to assume that both phases will be built. The second phase could be built a day after the first phase. So we did review this based upon the two phases. If you'll note, the site area has increased by approximately seventeen thousand square feet. That's because, again, as Director Savadon noted, they were able to pick up that additional office building. The units have increased by two hundred. You'll note there's a small increase in the actual building's square footage, but that increase in unit number is because the applicant was able to rearrange some of their internal floor plans and actually make some of the units smaller than what was proposed, basically putting dividing walls into the existing units. So the amount of units has increased by two hundred, but the actual square footage has only increased by approximately seven thousand from total. Because they did take off a story of the building and twelve feet of height, they have basically squashed the building out but made it wider. So as a result, they have increased lot coverage to approximately thirty-seven point eight percent. As noted, they did reduce the building's storage by one story, as well as the height by twelve feet, but as noted again in doing so, they've shortened the building and made it squatier. So the back end length of the building, the elevation that's actually adjacent to the rear property on the residential has increased from a hundred feet to a hundred and forty-two feet. That has increased the wall facing, or the massing facing that residence from seven thousand to a total of eight thousand square feet. So those are the impacts upon the adjacent property owners that bought the property. They do meet. We do want to note that both plans, and the revised plan does meet all the setback, all the height, all the bulk, all the lot coverage calculations for that district, as well as the parking requirements. This is a special use, and it does require public hearing. We have requested some minor changes to the landscaping, photometric, and elevations. Those are listed as conditions in your report. But the issue, again, in front of the planning commission tonight is a comparison of the four-story plan versus what the approved five-story plan is. And if the planning commission does deny the application for the four-story, the applicant has the right to go and build that five-story that Mr. Savadon noted. So in facilitating some discussion, we did include some points of consideration for the planning commission in the discussion. I will go over those real quickly. The first is, does the proposed change to a four-story wider building reduce the impact upon the adjacent properties? Does the proposed change to a four-story wider building reduce the impact upon, I'm sorry, present a more contextual massing and an appropriate building facade for Rochester Road? Three, should the building lighting be permitted on the rear/east elevation for Phase One? The planning commission remembers there was a long discussion debate about lighting, specifically lighting in the rear of the property. A recommendation or requirement of approval of the planning commission was the applicant was not able to do any back lighting or lighting on the building itself that would direct out into the residential properties. The only allowed lighting was pole lighting that was fifteen feet off the ground at the rear property line that would shine in towards the self-storage building. What the applicant has asked for is permission for the Phase One building. The Phase One building, again, is the building closest to Rochester Road to allow for some building lighting in the back at twenty feet off the building. So the planning commission is asked to consider that with the application. They do note that when Phase Two is built, again, the phase closest to the residential, that all the back light in the building will be removed as a condition of approval for that. The fourth question is, has the applicant adequately addressed architectural features on the rear/east elevation to reduce the impact upon adjacent property owners? Again, there was a long debate with the planning commission in regards to that elevation, specifically light coming from the building through windows into the adjacent property. After discussion, the planning commission had made a condition of approval that all there be no windows or any sort of light outgoing from the building in that back elevation. The applicant has revised their elevations to reduce or eliminate any windows on that back elevation. We again asked the planning commission if a purely no windows, no transparency at that back elevation is the right treatment for that rear elevation. Fifth, does the proposed wall, the applicant is proposing an eight-foot wall along the rear property line, replacing what is now a six-foot wall? Does the proposed wall and landscaping buffer as proposed adequately screen and protect the development from the adjacent properties? And lastly, does the application meet the standards of a special use as outlined in section nine point zero three? With all that being said, that is really, those are questions to facilitate discussion with the planning commission and the public. If the planning commission does recommend approval of the site plan and special use approval, there are some conditions that we recommend as part of that, specifically to address issue of the site plan. The first is to correct the parking figure on sheet S1 based on the revised plan. The second is to clean up and preserve the existing trees within the ten-foot rear landscape of the building. The third is to plant a different variety of Norway spruce or replace the Colorado spruce or replace with Colorado spruce, white spruce, or blue spruce that have a more narrower growth pattern than the proposed Norway spruce, which have a large growth pattern that can actually grow into the adjacent properties. The fourth is to spin a photometric plan for Phase Two that was not in the packet. And lastly, is to make any lighting, landscaping, or elevation changes based on the direction from the planning commission. That concludes our report, and we are open for any questions.
Just to add, one of the, had numerous conversations with the neighbor who was possibly right here. He's in attendance this evening, and we indicated he's not real comfortable speaking this evening. But he was the one who kind of brought to our attention the fact that the proposed trees have a very, very wide base, and as they grow, they not only grow taller, they also grow wider, and could negatively impact the fence. So he's the one who suggested we go with a more columnar variety of evergreens to screen. I just wanted to kind of punctuate that comment, because he did spend a lot of time at the counter talking about that, among other things.
Questions for the planning consultant? Mr. Crant?
What is, the setback right now from Phase Two to the property line is seventy-five feet. What was the original one?
Seventy-five feet, the same setback. It just, I see your... The major difference is, if you ever see my red, if you ever see my red, so the setback is the same.
Okay.
The length, this basically, this is about additional forty feet of building that's now adjacent to the rear that wasn't there as part of the five-story building.
Mr. Hudson?
Mr. Carlisle, if I just did your presentation, there would be some lighting on the back of the building in the first phase.
Yes.
But it would disappear with the second phase.
Correct.
Why would we need lighting in the first phase and then not have it in the second phase?
We are not recommending that lighting be, in any phase, have lighting on the rear of the building. The applicant is suggesting that they would need lighting for reasons that they can specify when they present. Mr. Hudson, you raise an interesting question. I just want to point out to the public, as well as the planning commission, what the two phases that we're talking about of the building, this will show it more clearly. The first phase is this box, and then the second phase is this box. This first phase, they know it will be constructed first. The second phase to be built within a five-year period or so. However, in our review, we have assumed that this basically is all going to be done as one building.
Mr. Tagle?
If they do not build the Phase Two in within the time stipulated, does that mean that they cannot, unless they come back in front of the commission?
Well, I would, I'll take a shot at it, and I'll ask Mr. Hudson to piggyback on my response. So a site plan's good for three years, and they will, as part of, basically, the condition of approval of the site plan would be that it's, within five years, they're going to build it. So moving forward five years, the site plan itself would have expired, so whatever wasn't completed would have expired, so they would have to come back to us to get approval for the second phase. Alan, how do I know?
Before you answer, is it after three years or after five years?
Well, I think if, if the planning commission were to have granted approval for five years, then it would be five years.
Thank you. Yeah, I would agree that if they don't make substantial advances toward completing the whole project in a five-year period, then technically, they probably have to come back and ask for amendments to continue beyond the five-year period.
In theory, they could submit, I mean, a site plan's good for three years, it expires, but to extend the site plan, they would submit final engineering drawings, and those can also be extended year to year. So there's a way to keep extending the project, but I have a feeling that based on the way, based on the way society is going with, you know, people have a lot of stuff, and as they, we've talked about this, and we talked about the cluster development, if people downsize, they'll get rid of some stuff but not all stuff. They got to put their stuff somewhere. So they run, based on, I've had the opportunity to visit the applicant's facility on Maple Road, it's very clean, they run a good business. I can, I would imagine that, I would expect that this would be built out within five years based on...
So part of, what they're asking for in the approval is to go beyond the three-year approval for five-year for this site plan?
That's my understanding, yes. Yes.
All right. Ms. Cruz?
I just want to clarify and make sure that one of the questions that we need to answer tonight is not whether this project is going to get done, correct? This project is getting done. It's a matter of is it a five-story or a revised four-story? I just want to clarify that. Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, I think at this point, we're ready to hear from the applicant.
Where would you like me?
You're going to have to go to the microphone back there, so that your voice won't be on tape.
Mr. Chairman, may anyone who speaks this evening, please speak into the microphone? It does not amplify, but it does record, this meeting is recorded and televised, so thank you.
And you have signed in, sir?
I did, yes, when we first came in. Thank you for seeing us tonight. I'm here tonight with the developer, Ed Hirsch, and his developer's attorney, Mr. Jerry Pessek. I'm the project architect, Joe Guido. I was the project architect on the original plan. And basically, there isn't much to add to Ben and Brent's presentation, other than the fact that, at the time when we did the five-story plan that was approved several years ago, the property along to the north and along Rochester Road was not available. They tried to purchase it, it wasn't for sale at the time, or we probably would have had this type of plan to begin with. So we did, we were sensitive to the fact, all the reaction from the neighbors the first time around, and Ed and his partner decided that they would expend the money to purchase the other piece of property once it became available, and then lower the building in response to the concerns of the neighbors. And that's basically the difference in the two proposals at this point. To address the lighting situation, the reason we would like to have the rear lighting in the first phase is because it's about another, it's a hundred and fifty-five feet from the residential versus the seventy-five feet. Once we do the second phase, the lights in the back will provide enough light for security purposes on the back of the building. In the first phase, we're another seventy-some feet away from those lights, and we are just concerned that we may not have the light value at that point. Other than that, the architecture of the building, the style, the color, the materials, everything is really the same as it was the first time.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Crant?
Where are the lights located during that first phase? I mean, I didn't...
There's three poles along the east property line. You can probably see them.
Right, yeah, I saw those, but I mean, during the, when Phase One is being built, you wanted lighting on the back of Phase One, so where are those lights?
There would be, I think, three lights across the back of the property that would be about twenty feet off the ground, which is just a little higher than the masonry that you see there, just up into the siding. And those would be wall lights, LED lights that would shine directly down. We can, you know, have them specified to have down discharge on the lights. So they really shouldn't provide any kind of glare or disturbance at that distance from...
Mr. Crant, this is the Phase One elevation, so if I heard you correctly, Mr. Guido, it would be three lights?
Yeah, there would be one kind of over the door, the entrance door, and then one on each side of that.
So somewhere in this location, there would be three lights approximately, we've heard between fifty and twenty feet off the ground.
Right, exactly.
They're wall-mounted?
Wall-mounted, but they're LEDs, and they shine down. They're not like the old wall packs that kind of shine out. These are more directed down.
And as per the photometric plan, the applicant would, as Mr. Guido indicated, you, the neighbors to the east will not be able to see the light source, they'll be shielded. The intensity at the base of the light on the ground at grade cannot exceed twenty-foot candles, and the foot candles at the property line are zero. So they're not going to have a negative impact on the neighbors.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I'm sorry, I just, can I ask?
No, we're going to get the public comment in just a minute.
The other thing that maybe I can point out, in case it's confusing, the elevation that's the upper left on that projection, those are panels that will match the siding that'll be put in in the first phase, and that's basically the location of the corridors that will connect the first phase to the second phase. So that's why you see those, they're not windows, they're actually opaque panels to match that will be removed.
Another question, if anyone else... Anyone else from the planning commission have questions? If not, go to Mr. Crant.
The perimeter fence, there's, you showed two illustrations. One was like a wrought iron type fence, and one is a chain link, but I, is that thick black line, let's say along the north side, are those thick black sections chain link, and the others are the more wrought iron style?
I think we took the wrought iron fence a certain distance back. I really can't tell from here, and I don't recall, to be honest with you, the decorative fence, but we can't return it back a certain distance, whatever the planning commission may deem appropriate, and then change to a chain link fence as we go farther east. But across the front, the exposure to Rochester Road would definitely be the decorative fence and piers.
I'm a little lost right there. I am. So the fence on the north property line is going to be what? Is it going to be chain link, or is it going to be this iron fence?
Part of both. We'll start at that corner where the fence parallels Rochester Road. We'll probably go back two or three sections with decorative fence, and then change over to chain link the rest of the way back. So probably somewhere in the area of fifty feet of decorative fence as you go east.
That's all eight-foot high?
We were planning six.
The wall, the wall, the back, if that's eight feet.
That's the only thing, it's going to be eight feet.
Correct.
Okay. And that back wall, is that chain link fence?
It's a masonry wall.
It is a masonry wall.
It's over here.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Has anybody talked, I think this is an appropriate time to ask this question. The mature trees that are already on the residence property back there, you know, it's not a secret that they're already growing into the wall, the existing six-foot wall. When you put an eight-foot wall back there, what's going to happen to those existing neighbors' trees?
I'm not an arborist, but my guess is they'll be impacted to some degree. We might have to work with a planner to adjust the location of the wall and the neighbor, possibly to impact the trees as little as possible.
Have you had any discussions with those neighbors about this?
I don't believe we have at this point, no.
Just a comment slash question, and again, this is related to the conversation I have with the neighbor that lives over here. The landscape plan does show preserving at least two of the trees here along the property line. Would you be open to, if the neighbors agreed, would you be open to replacing some of those trees with some new evergreen coniferous conical evergreens? The applicant is not, he's ahead of BS.
Absolutely, absolutely. We're here to work with the neighbors as best as we can.
Great.
Any other questions for the applicant? If not, we'll begin the public comment phase here, and be sure that every one of you have already signed in. Be sure to sign in on the sign-in sheet, and be sure to speak into the microphone. So who wants to go first?
My name is Michelle Trussler, I live at thirty-seven twenty-nine Hawthorne, so I have a wall, and down by the bank is where my property comes up to. My question, I'm sorry when I asked, is the lighting of the first phase versus the lighting of the second phase? Because the bank has been so kind that they dim the lights at night. Now, we still have the twenty-four-hour teller and all of that, but when it comes up to our property, those lights go down, and all the other people have the lights off. They're dimmed at ten o'clock at night. We don't have any lighting problems. In fact, I believe that recently, they made them, and I'm going to start shaking because I do, like, they flicker a little bit if there's traffic. So they're actually, you know, monitored in that way. But my concern is, the first phase and having all that lighting for five years possibly, and you're not even sure if you're going to do the second phase possibly, you know, that's a choice you have, and I understand that. But I don't want the lighting for five years either, because when you have a building that tall, that's a lot of lighting, a tremendous amount of lighting. of lighting. And so, you're talking about 20 feet up. We have, I believe, there are possibly 10 feet for the bank. You know, they did a wonderful job, and, and believe me, and I, I believe you are too, very concerned, and we've had wonderful people that, if we ever had a concern, I don't even know the bank people's names because our concerns have not been there, and they've been so kind, and all the other properties have as well. But my major concern is that our power goes out, my power at my house goes out once a month, for approximately eight hours. So the power grid is already spent. And DTE has us on a red line, we all call, we plug in across the street to our neighbors for our sun pump, because we have an underground river there. Now, we also, just this month, had the water sewer people come out, because for four years, and it took me four years to get them out, my yard would flood with water. And they said, well, you're at the end of the line. Well, finally, they, they came out and they did dredge it out, they used the fire hydrant, and it flooded my basin. Okay, clean water, cleaned it up, I'm not concerned, but I am concerned of the impact of a building of this size on the power grid, as well as the sewer system. It's antiquated, we know that. But this is a, a huge problem that we have right now, and it happens on a monthly basis. So, those are my main concerns, and the 24-hour thing as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Robertson, I live at 3705 Hawthorne, which is across the cul-de-sac from, from Michelle. And first, I want to say that I, I think, from my perspective, the, the four-story plan is improved from the five-story plan, so I appreciate that, although I think there might have been some reasons why the five-story plan isn't as viable for other things that we're not really aware of. It seems like it may have been too narrow to be a real, very workable arrangement, but I mean, that's just speculation on my part. But I do have a couple of concerns, and first of all, I'm concerned with the style or the, the way that the, the users will be entering the building. I, I believe it's an indoor driveway that goes through the building, and that vehicles, be it moving trucks or whatever they might be, will be coming around from the back, enter the rear of the building on the east face, and proceed inside to unload whatever it is they're moving. My concern, I, I think there's a couple of concerns with that. Number one is that we may have a stack-up of, of trucks idling along that curved back driveway. You know, the sound of the idling, the, the smell of the diesel exhaust, you know, if, if there's a lot of that going on, it could be pretty disruptive. And then, the other part of that concern is that, once these vehicles are inside of the building, has there been anything done for exhaust fans, or environmental protection, or safety of, of the atmosphere with vehicles' exhausts inside the building? That would be a concern, I think, as well. I want to echo what Michelle said about the, the power grid, because regularly, we happen to be the lucky ones that are on the, the good side of the power grid, so regularly my neighbors that are on that side have to run extension cords to our house to have power, and it happens all the time. But my other concern is in regards to the fact that there's a cell tower approximately 100 yards to the north of this structure, this proposed structure, and I had estimated that height to be about 60 feet. I, I do have a mechanical engineering background, so I think I had a pretty accurate estimate. And with the building being nearly 70 feet tall, I felt that that could be a, a real problem for cell reception, blocking that cell tower. Now, with it being 12 feet shorter, maybe, maybe it's not as much of a concern, but from what I understand, because I raised this question almost three years ago, nobody has put any concern or, or interest in determining if that's any kind of a problem. So, I wanted to go on record to state that, to state that, that maybe there's a potential problem there, maybe there isn't, but I don't know what's required for approval for the architect to look at all these different environmental situations, to make sure that they're adhering to what's required. So, I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is William Genuin, I live at 1274 Tennyson. I'm curious if the planning commission or the city has done a study to determine what the reduction in property values will be for those homes that are going to back up to this, this structure? And the ones that are maybe two or three in each direction? Anyone's going to have a sightline in their backyard of this building, has there been any study done to say, property values will be reduced by this amount? Yes or no? Was there a study done?
No.
Should there have been a study done to determine what type of property value reductions those homeowners could expect from the structure being put up? Is that ever done? No? So there's no concern for the homeowner's loss of property values when these decisions are made? Is what I understand?
Well, that's not really true. You do have a board of review that you can appeal.
Right, I'm just saying-
What's the point of having a board if that concern is not addressed?
This is not that important, ma'am.
All right. What's the point of having a board of review then, if, if it's done after the fact? What I'm saying is, no one here has done a study to say, how will this impact the value of the properties that the homeowners own that backs up to this project? And that seems like something that should be done, because that money is going to be lost to these people who live closer to this project than those that live further away. If I have a piece of property that backs up to a two-story building that can't be seen, it's not going to affect me. But if I have a property that backs up to a four or a five-story building, I'm going to lose value on my property. And the board doesn't seem to be concerned, the city doesn't seem to be concerned. Thank you.
Perhaps you might be able to check with Mr. LaCary to see if anything like that's ever been done, and what the options are for that. You know, we've had, we've had four-story buildings, and this built in Troy, and they're adjacent-
Not my backyard.
Excuse me, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
If you'd like to be ejected, we can, we can certainly arrange to have you ejected from the meeting. So please hold your comments until you're speaking, all right? He's trying to make a point that, how about, you know, when all the office, the high-rise office buildings along Big Beaver, they abut residential neighborhoods too. And I don't think this issue has ever come up before. Mr. Taylor?
Mr. Chairman, I think you've made a, a point on several occasions, that this property has been commercial for a long time, and when people buy properties, residential properties adjacent to commercial properties, they have to be aware of what may be built on that property.
You're absolutely right. Okay, well, listen to the next public president, please.
I'm Art Disios, I live at 3819 Hawthorne. So the new four-story plan seems to be affecting me the most, because I'm on the corner where now that chunk is going to be what I'm looking at. So, I mean, I'm obviously disappointed, I was disappointed with the five-story, but the four-story seems to be a happy median, if you will, but I'm still disappointed. When we originally were at the meeting, one of the planning commission talked about a four-story in the front, three-story in the back, and the, the engineer whoever said, well, that's not feasible based upon the square footage, economically it doesn't make sense. Well, now you have larger footprint, maybe you can look at that again. I understand I'm probably barking up the wrong tree, this is probably too, too little, too late, but, and I tend to agree with the other person who said, it seemed convenient that the property was sold and went up on the market. It, it just seems too convenient. But my main concern is, is I didn't realize there was two phases to this. In the back of my property, over the wall, there's trees from the former Davy Tree Service growing into my yard. I want to get a fence up. I can't put a fence up because of these trees. I can't. So, knowing that it's going to perhaps be five years until these trees are cleaned up, is disappointing. I would really like to have a resolution to that, I would like that area clear-cut. You know, if that's what's going to happen, that's what's got to happen, but I can't, I mean, the weeds are growing into my yard, I mean, there's nothing more I can do. So, that, that's my main concern. Thanks.
Would you like to speak down there?
I do have another question. This may have been addressed, and I, I didn't hear it, to the architect, is there any kind of soundproofing in the building?
Did you give your name?
I'm sorry, the name is Amy Rymas at 1235 Tennyson.
1235 Tennyson?
Correct. I was just wondering if there's going to be any soundproofing in the building to help stop some of the sound, as much as possible?
We'll have the applicant address that after, after the residents' comments. Thank you.
Does the public speak a second time, or not?
If the board agrees. Does anybody object?
William Genuin, 1274 Tennyson. The comment was made that when people purchase next to industrial property, they should expect things to be built. When these people's homes were built, the limit was two stories. It was increased to five stories a few years, years ago, when the zoning was rewritten for the entire city. I, I find it ironic that you can build a five-story building so close to a home, 75 feet from homes on Rochester Road, but on Maple Road, where the gentleman's other storage facility is built, you're limited to three stories. And there's no residential 75 feet behind those buildings. So, when the chairman spoke about people should expect that these things can be built there, yeah, they expected it to be two stories, they didn't expect it to be five.
My name is Marvin Carrero, I live at 3723 Hawthorne, and I've been a resident of Troy for almost 39 years. I have to say, I mean, I'm listening to everything, I have to say that I think four stories is inappropriate, and I also am concerned about the 24 hours, the noise, the lights. And the gentleman spoke and said, when our homes were purchased, and yes, you knew that you were back-to-back with a commercial area, but you did not expect five stories. And while the building is attractive, I don't think it belongs there.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak from the audience?
Sure. My name is Dave Rymas, I live at 1235 Tennyson.
I signed in, Dave.
I'm sorry, yes, I did sign in. So, not a good public speaker, so I have to look at what I wrote here, but I agree with all my neighbors, all their comments, and when we purchased our home, zoning was two stories. And I guess I'd like to know, would any of you like to have moved to a beautiful city of Troy with a nice view of trees? Would any of you like to have this building in your backyard, 51 feet or 57 feet? It's ridiculous, it's going to bring down our house values, it's going to look horrible. So, could I see a raise of hands of who would like to have this building in their backyard? Is there anyone in this board, this planning committee? No one. But you're going to do it to us, so it's, it's ridiculous. You've taken my house, and you're, you're lowering the property value, and are we going to see this in our SEV values, our taxes coming down because of what you're turning our beautiful view of rain tree subdivision, beautiful trees, now I'm going to be some, see some ugly building every time I step out my front door or my back door of my house? So, I didn't see a single person on this planning committee say that, that they would love to have this building, but, okay, we have one person that wants-
That's not why I'm raising my hand.
Okay.
Let's wait till he's done.
Okay. I'm also concerned about the noise. I, I love to sleep in the summertime with windows open, hearing, you know, birds chirping and stuff. Now I'm going to hear diesel trucks in my, when I'm sleeping at night, because it's 24 by 7, I'm going to hear diesel trucks running as I'm trying to sleep. So, I would ask the same question, I'm normally the same answer, is anybody in this room that, when you go to sleep at night, you'd like to hear diesel trucks running? Okay.
Please wrap it up, sir.
I, I will. I, I guess that's it. So nobody on this planning committee would want any of this in your backyard, but it sounds like we're getting stuck with diesel trucks running at night, we're getting stuck with an eyesore when we purchase the house in Troy with a beautiful view of trees, nature. That's all I can say.
Ms. Cruz?
To the people in the audience, I have a personal story that I would like to share with you. I live in Troy, I've lived here for almost 20 years. When I purchased my home, it was a cul-de-sac neighborhood. There's one entrance in, one entrance out, it's a circle, it has 54 homes. Surrounding my neighborhood was land, and it was all zoned residential. Since I have been in my home for 20 years, it has all changed. Part of that land is now looking at being zoned, rezoned Big Beaver Corridor, and I have office buildings behind me. All the deer are gone, all the crickets are gone, the birds are gone, but I haven't seen a negative impact on my property values. People are still very anxious to buy into my neighborhood, and it's because the location is good, the homes are well-kept, the people are nice, we have curb appeal. But if you look at what's surrounding my neighborhood, it's livernoy, it's trucks, it's diesel, it's office buildings, and I'm going to very soon be welcoming a four-story building, almost in my backyard, but no negative property values, yet. Can't speak for what happens next year, this year, 10 years from now, but so far, everyone in my neighborhood has made money when they've sold their home over the purchase price.
Okay, since we have this item back at the planning commission table, I'm assuming there's nobody else who wants to speak again from the audience? Okay. I think the other thing we have to keep in mind is, we only have one question to answer tonight, essentially.
That's true, we do.
Is it going to be a five-story, or is it going to be a four-story? And I didn't hear anyone, when that particular issue came up, everyone seemed to prefer the four-story versus the five-story. So, I think that's it. Mr. Cruz, seven, please.
Housekeeping matter, you did not close the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, we, we, the public hearing is now closed and then brought back to the table, the planning commission.
If I could have Mr. Guido, there's a couple of questions related to sound, what, what type of, what type of technology will be used related to sound? If you could speak to the, the amount of, of tra, of traffic we could anticipate, you know, how often the door goes up, how long it remains up, you know, how, how noisy that is, and also the hours of operation? I think there's a, there's an assumption in the residents', rightfully so, that this is going to be a 24-hour operation, but if you could also state the hours of, of operation for this facility?
Okay, in terms of, there was a question about interior sound. About 75% of the back wall is basically an insulated metal panel, it's got about three inches of styrofoam in it, and typically, the inside noise generated in a building like this is practically nothing. It's people that are carrying their goods in from the interior loading area up to their unit, and away they go. These are very quiet projects. If you ever looked at the traffic on and off of Maple Road, the project on Maple Road, which is even larger than this, it's very minimal. The initial lease-up, when the building is new, there's some activity there, but once the building starts to fill, the chip, trip generation on and off, Ed, you can probably verify this, is probably 10 to 15 cars a day, that's it. And there will be no trucks running out there, you know, all night, this is not a 24-hour operation. I'm not sure exactly what the hours are going to be- to be. I think on Maple Road, you actually close at seven, seven or eight, something like that. So, it, it may be limited somewhat, but it would not be a twenty-four-hour access. I think there may be special cases where somebody is allowed twenty-four-hour access. You know, they have their code. They can get in and get out, but that's not the general public. Those are just specific users that have to have access to their, their equipment, maybe for, you know, any time during the night or day. But, it's not generally the case at all. These are very, very quiet developments.
Mr. Herrle.
May I have Mr. Greto answer two more questions that came from the public?
Yes, please.
Mr. Greto, in regards to dimming the lights, it's an ordinance requirement that you dim the lights after the ordinance says eleven o'clock, unless there are specific security concerns. Are you willing to volunteer to dim the lights?
I believe so, yeah. I don't think we'd have any problem with that at all. We can do that.
The second question was, one of the gentlemen in the audience spoke about the timing of when the wall will be built along the...
That's first, first phase.
You wouldn't do it as part of the first phase of development?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Zed.
Mr. Greto, you can communicate via headphones with Mr. Hirsch if you'd like. Would you be willing to limit the hours of operation to, for example, eight o'clock in the morning to eight o'clock at night? Or whatever, you know, you think is reasonable for your business?
Ed Hirsch, thank you for having us tonight. I think maybe what's appropriate is like seven AM. And then, generally, we cut off access at nine PM. Sometimes, there's one or two clients that need to come in at nighttime. I think we'd like to have that ability. Generally, it's a quiet use. You know, maybe they work late at night and they have to bring in some of their supplies at night.
Thank you.
I think that sounds like a yes. And also, I heard some, some neighbors indicate that the quality of the trees that are there, I mean, the existing trees on your, on your site that are maybe not the best quality. Could you just kind of just clear-cut what's there and replace with new and fresh and nicer trees?
We would be very happy to do that. I think we were told we could not do that in the past, but we'd like to put up a new wall, put up new trees, and clean up the rear of the property and make it look nice.
Can I ask one more question while he's up here? You're not going to plant, like, saplings that are this tall, right? You're going to, obviously, they're going to, when you're planted, they're going to be large.
They'll be appropriate size.
I believe they're called out as between ten, ten and twelve feet. They're going to be significant when they're planted.
Yeah.
Not a problem.
Aubame. You missed your point. Does anybody on the planning commission want to have another question from the audience answered? Okay, you're up. Go ahead, Ben.
I was just curious if you have security cameras at your other facilities?
Yes, we do.
Ms. Kupa.
I had a question. Just looking at the map, this looks like it's closer to Rochester. Somebody mentioned a rain tree park. Rain tree park is way on the other side of that square mile. It's on the, am I missing something? Somebody said they...
That's the name of the subdivision.
Subdivision. Rain tree subdivision.
Does that satisfy you?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Crank.
One resident was talking about the drain of the power. Now, I'm, I'm sure they can call DTE energy and find out usually, and this is my, just from knowing past experience, that DTE has special lines that run on commercial districts with their own, usually three-phase power, entirely different from residential power, which is single-phase. So, that resident could probably check with DTE, but I don't think this, this developer, any development on Rochester Road will have any effect on any residential areas. Two different types of power. Not true.
Sorry, but the businesses go down as well. Red sheer power grid with them.
Could I address the drainage?
Yes, please do.
This, this project will be designed to county standards in terms of stormwater detention because you are taking a site that's basically pervious now and adding a lot of impervious surface. So, it'll have an underground manifold detention system that'll be designed to county standards so that the discharge rate into the sewer system is appropriate and will meet their, their standards. It won't, it won't add any additional runoff to surrounding properties at all.
Thank you. Mr. Zed.
Well, I think I misspoke earlier about the trees. They're going to be twelve to fourteen-foot at time of planting, so they're going to be significant, significant sized trees when they're planted.
They'd be above the eight-foot wall.
Yes.
Any other questions from the planning commission or from the audience?
I just want to check with DTE. I would greatly appreciate if they put in a new line for all...
Yes, Mr. Ackerman.
I have a question. Can the applicant speak a little bit to the level of noise that the door in the back creates, especially maybe comparing the first phase to the second phase? So, if the first phase is there for five years, that door being farther from the actual residence versus a second phase, can you speak a little bit to the, to the noise level of that, that door and how that...
The door is electrically operated with a motor. It, it really wouldn't be any louder than anybody's garage door. It's on, you know, an automatic opener. It's the same system. It's a fourteen-foot-high door, so it'll be in motion a little bit longer than a garage door would be, but the, the noise from the motor, the motor's actually inside, it's probably fifteen to sixteen feet inside the back wall of the building. And the only noise you could possibly hear is the rollers, you know, and the rails.
Does that door have to be closed while there is loading and unloading on inside?
Absolutely. It opens and closes. As soon as the car goes in, it closes behind it.
Do they have activity, trucks, vehicles, loading, unloading, that door will be closed?
All inside, yes. And we do have, I think there was a question about the air quality inside. That's all taken care of. It's, it's no different than the system we have on Maple Road. There's carbon monoxide detectors. There's exhaust fans. So, all that indoor air quality is all controlled by code.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we're, is there any need for further discussion here at the table? Mr. Tagel.
Yeah, I think the, yeah, I like the project. I think it's good. What I'm opposed to are these wall packs, these lights on the building. I do not like those. There will, I mean, whether the spillage will ever reach the property line is not the question, but visually, we'll see them. I would much prefer to see pole-mounted lights at a, you know, at a lower level, placed on either side of the drives, because there are, there are wall packs all the way down each side of the building in addition to the east elevation. And I would, I would much prefer to see a pole-mounted light along the edge of the drives and accomplish, I think, accomplish a better lighting distribution along those drives than what's shown on the photometric plan, but still not, you know, impeding the residents as much.
Should those would still be LED lights?
That would be, that would be the preferred choice, but certainly, that is the petitioner's call. I mean, from an energy-saving standpoint, quality of light, yes, LED would be the first choice.
I don't have a strong opinion on one way. And I'm certainly involved in energy audits and for small businesses, and I know the, the track is definitely to LED. And I know there are a lot of LED wall packs too.
Right.
That, that can be pretty well tuned, so they, the, the light only goes down, but are, is it a glare problem or...
No, no. What, you're going to see the light. There, there's a, yes, there's a downlight component, but there's also a vertical phase, a portion of that that you're going to see. I mean, if you look at the photometrics, it's not directly down. It comes away from the building. So, to get it away from the building, there's got to be some level of light that's coming off the fixture.
You'd rather see...
I'd rather see a pole-mounted light away from the building, you know, lighting the driveways and the entrance drive into the, into the building.
We can, it's not a problem. We can do that. We can take it off the building.
Okay. Now, we're getting to the point where I think, unless there's any further comment, we need a resolution to either approve the five-story building or the four-story building, and in either case, with all the other special conditions that we seem to have come to agree on. Mr. Crank.
I'll read it, but I just wanted to check with the rest of the commission, besides the, Mr. Tagel's comment, and I'll include that, to not have any wall-mounted lights on the rear of the building.
Not just the knob, but to replace it with the pole-mounted.
Yeah, and to replace it with the pole-mounted. Is there any other points besides what's on our resolution that I should include?
Mr. Herrle.
If I may, yeah. I'm thinking one thing. Maybe you should add to the issue of the pole lighting versus the wall pod, that with the construction of the second phase, that the lighting be eliminated entirely in the rear.
That already is a part of the agreement, but it's hard to emphasize it. I don't think that's a problem.
I wasn't so sure it was.
They're proposing three light poles. So, it'll be eliminated near the building, but that's because there's going to be three light poles that provide sufficient light for the rear.
I didn't have security light. I think the point is that you can, you can accomplish the necessary security light and safety lighting with pole-mounted lights. You don't have to use wall packs or wall, wall-mounted lights. And that's, that was my point of my comment. Get rid of the wall lights. Make it pole lights.
The applicant has agreed to do that.
Yep.
Yes, Mr. Crank. There were two or three other things about the trees too, I think.
I was going to get to that. One of the other conditions was limiting the hours based upon what the applicant has noted.
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine, but he did say that he would like the ability to, in very infrequent situations, let somebody come in. Let's say there's an emergency, somebody had to get to some kind of equipment because something failed at their house and they wanted to get that stuff now. You can't say at one o'clock in the morning, they can't get their stuff.
I think the point was open to the public between seven AM and nine AM. If you, if you have storage in that building and you have the code.
Yes. I said, if you have the public, you have access.
Right.
I would, just change four says submit photometric plan for phase two. I would like to that say to phase one plus two, with phase one being the change of the wall mount, removal of the wall mount packs. And then, lastly, resubmit a landscape plan showing the removal and replacement of the trees along the rear property line, because the current landscape plan actually shows the preservation of those trees. So, we'll make sure that there's a complete landscaping buffer along that rear property line.
I think the current number three is really essential. I, I think there's, we need to get into the more columnar trees for that, you know, but thanks. That's a good, good suggestion. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Crank.
Was there anything else? I've got so far the, we're going to replace, submit photometric plan for phase one, including removing wall-mounted signs, replacing wall-mounted lights, replacing them with pole-mounted lights. We've got a new, a totally new landscaping plan along the east wall. And we've got, anything else? There's only two. Are there anything else that was...
Just for clarification, is the eight-foot wall already a part of this?
On the plan set.
Yes.
Anything else? Okay. Resolve. That special use approval and preliminary site plan approval for the proposed 1-800 Mini Storage, east side of Rochester, south of Waddles. 3-8-4-6 Rochester, section 23, currently zoned GB, General Business District, be granted, subject to the following conditions. Correct parking figure on sheet S-1 based on revised site plan. Cleanup, cleanup, and, well, we're not going to clean up. We're going to, we're going to provide a totally new landscaping plan along the east property line, including trees that are ten to twelve feet high.
New trees.
New trees. All new trees. And I'm not going to specify three because that covers that.
Well, I think you do have to be...
Well, okay. Plant.
Cupressina is a different tree.
Okay, then, then it's already there. It's a different type of, because I was a little confused on it because we have Norway...
It's a different variety. It's a specific variety.
Norway.
It's a columnar.
Okay. Okay, plant, is it?
Cupressina.
Cupressina, Norway spruce, or replace with Colorado spruce, white spruce or blue spruce. They have more column, columnar, is that what that, that we said?
Columnar.
Growth pattern. Submit photometric plan for phase one that includes removing the wall-mounted signs on the back of the building and replacing it with pole-mounted lights. Did I say signs? It should be pole-mounted. Remove wall-mounted lights with pole-mounted lights. And... That's it.
And also, what I think you also meant to add, Mr. Crank, was hours of operation should not exceed...
That was it. Thank you.
Seven to nine.
Hours of operation...
Open to the public seven to nine.
Yeah, are open to the public from seven AM to nine PM.
I think four should re-submit photometric plan for phases one and two. Okay, thank you. I'll make that correction.
Okay. So, now Kathy, did you get the resolution?
I do have it, yes.
It wasn't bad.
It's a good procedure. Okay, is there a second to the resolution? Mr. Tagel, thank you. Moved in second, Mr. Tagel, and so we're ready for a resident. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Crank.
Yes.
Ms. Kupa.
Yes.
Mr. Tagel.
Yes.
Mr. Abiedian.
Yes.
Ms. Cruz.
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds.
Yes. Resolution passes. Do you not have a time limit?
August 15.
Okay.
Good thing I'm not turned by the words.
Do we need a five-minute break or are we okay?
Okay, so we have nothing left to do, right?
That's all right. Let's roll. Would you mind going out in the hall to speak to him? Thank you. Item number nine is public comment for items on the current agenda. If there's no one, we'll move on to planning commission comment, number 10. Let's start with you, Mr. Crank, tonight.
Nothing.
Mr. Hudson.
We didn't discuss anything with the cluster development tonight, but I'd like to suggest that when we get to it, there is a suggestion made in our last tour of the clusters around town, that we might want to consider having an architectural committee phase of the cluster development. And I think that, in my opinion, that kind of goes a little closer to, we had the discussion, there was an exemption, at least in original draft, to zoning areas A and B. I said, well, maybe we can't do that. But, I'm thinking, if we had an architectural committee, that committee would be charged with making at least an effort that whatever type of building is going to go in the cluster, it may be complementary to the zoning area in which the cluster is being proposed. I thought, I haven't given much more on that, but we might want to consider that at the appropriate time.
Mr. Tagel.
Yeah, just to add to that, I think we may want to consider putting in some guidelines in ordinance that would help the committee do what they need to do if, in fact, we create the committee. And if we don't, help the planning commission. And if we don't, help the planning commission.
It's very similar to the Sustainable Design Committee that we have now, where we do have guidelines. I, I don't know, it's not a bad idea, what do you think, Mr. Sevendon?
Well, the, most of the planning commission attended the retreat, and helped to formulate the strategies for the upcoming fiscal year, and one of those strategies is to look at quality, development quality.
That's right.
So, consideration of a design review committee, or a design review board, or whatever we come up with, I think, um, if done, would, it seems to be consistent with that, with that strategy, and it's something that we can definitely discuss.
Okay, good, good suggestion, thank you. Ms. Cooper.
Um, next week, the Troy Historic Village and the Troy Library and, I don't know who else, but the City of Troy for sure, um, are celebrating Embracing Excellence, is their event on May 18th. It is at the Troy Community Center, um, starts with jazz and then dinner, and it's, I think the event starts at six with the jazz and reception, and then seven is the dinner. I don't know if we've, uh, page on the-
Six to nine.
Yeah, at six to nine, and they are giving, it's their third annual event, and, um, this year, for the first time, they are giving History Maker Awards, and I am one of them.
You are. You'll be one of them.
All right, can you sign here?
Yes. That was it. So, please, huh?
I'll be there.
I just wanted to comment about that cluster field trip we had, I just found it very constructive, beneficial, and maybe sometime in the future, we can go over our feedback that we all gave and just kinda see where, what we thought about each one of those locations and developments, and what we liked, what we don't, what we wanna see here, what we don't wanna see in Troy.
Right. No, I thought it was a really super trip, I, I hope that we, we could do something similar in the future for other projects. And you did a great, great job taking all the notes and doing the minutes, because we didn't have room for Kathy.
Right.
Because she, otherwise, she would've been there. Uh, Ms. Cruz.
Well, I guess congratulations are in order to Padma, um, and I did thoroughly enjoy the field trip for the cluster zoning. Um, you know, tonight made me, I, I don't know what the word is that I wanna use, I'm, I'm, I understand, at the same time, I'm disappointed, at the same time, I wanna fix it, you know, I'm sorry that the public seems to have this perception that we don't care how our decisions affect them, whether it's positively or negatively, they, they just seem to think we're a, a board that, that doesn't take that into consideration, so, um, boy, I'd like to give us an image makeover, if I could figure out a way, I'll let you know, but I appreciate all of the hard work that, that City Hall does, and, um, I just want you guys to know, I think you're doing an outstanding job. Thank you.
Mr. Tagel.
I'm good tonight, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Basley.
No, no, thank you.
Mr. Herla.
Um, though not as exciting an award as, uh, Padma had received, I do wanna make note that Terry O'Parka, you see her a lot in the audience, um, with Troy Dimes, has just won an award for, um, some reports she actually did on the city of Troy. Uh, she won the Society of Professional Journalists, the Detroit chapter in the Class C Division, she won the consumer and watchdog category, um, for her articles about the cluster ordinance, the collection of about five or six articles that she wrote, and so she, um, she, uh, she won an award from Society of Professional Journalists. So, she's not here, I did talk to her on the phone today, um, so I think she might watch it on TV, hello.
Right.
But congratulations, so.
And well deserved.
Yes.
Mr. Sevendon.
I have nothing to add.
I think I'm good too, thank you very much, this meeting ends here.